It's June 18th, 7:00 PM. This is the Township before I complain, we're reading. Everyone, please rise with a flag.
Wait a minute. You.
Was we actually suicide? Now you say some. I am. It's just a party. Curious fans. Why not? They should have. And it is this one. But everybody in justice. So. It is. Oh, not as well. They got good. You know. She. So. It's having.
Chris, what do you have for the meeting? The state of police.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Openshaw Law and Meetings Act and the hanging on notice of meetings. The copy was posted on the township website and notice of this meeting was sent to the set not to the copy was posted at the Franklin Township in this will draw.
Mr. Good sir.
Okay, thank you. All call.
Mr. Malady.
Here.
Mr. Tally.
Here.
Mr. Cahoo. Mr. Crossdancing.
Here.
Mr. Doyle.
Here.
Mr. Ranson. Mr. Sway. Mr. Park.
Here.
Mr. Travelian.
Here.
Chairman.
Yes.
Tonight, we'll see Kyle Clark for Jake Brown. Okay, next on the agenda is the PD 2304, Gloucester Solar LLC, Gloucester Solar One, LXC Resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
I have a motion, is our second.
So those tight.
Second.
Okay, uh, real call please.
What do we? You can't see the chair for side of.
Don't see. They should.
One thing.
Hold on.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Ren.
Ren's. Sorry.
Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
Mr. Travelian.
Yes.
Mr. Pat. Chairman.
Yes, sorry. Okay, this town will move on to PD 2307, Kenworth. Ed.
Good evening.
Uh, David, address for the record, please.
Kenneth Thorney Jr., 22 Valerie Court, Malibu, New Jersey.
Hey, I would ask Kate to swear your hand.
Second, Reginald, I think she, wait, can you swear if that was on the tree?
Yes.
What's all?
Um, at this point, I really don't really, I'm not too clear. We got the approvals through in front of your board and then we went to the county. The county took about five and a half months to get the, um, I guess, the, the offsets and, and, um, I don't know, the easements and everything approved. So by the time they approved it, I guess you're, were expired here.
Okay.
Okay?
So what you're asking for is an extension on the existing approval because it delays, as long as it's not delayed because of the septic system not being installed in timely fashion.
Right.
We certainly cannot attain it, but, uh, uh.
It's in septic issues.
Okay, so, uh, what kind of time are you looking for? That you'd be comfortable with where you won't have to come back?
I don't even know what happens really next at this point. I mean, I gotta get your extension for them to get the approvals. I mean, I'm, it's been two and a half years. I'm ready to go.
My intention will drive, I believe the law allows for two, one-year extension to our here.
I'll make a motion to take the first one, just then.
Okay, all motion.
Second.
I'm a second. All call bill, please.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Sally.
Yes.
Mr. Crossdancing.
I'm not upstate.
Two seconds. What do you? Mr. Doyle.
I'm begging state this way.
What could tell me?
Mr. Park.
Yes.
Mr. Travelian.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. All right, motion carries with two exceptions.
All right.
You have a year.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, moving on, the next one is the presentation of the master plan. We're going to report to Keith.
Susan Hertz said, you want to come up, uh, come up and sit next to Chris, uh, by microphone, Susan Sheridan, I can be.
Start them.
Yeah. Yes, no. Okay, uh, who would like to start? Chris, you want to start or I find Susan?
I'll say it's under the board's pleasure, whether you want the committee chair or me as the planner to explain, but I'm happy to let her go through the report if she sees fit and I can jump in as needed or give the winner.
Since I've been waiting for what?
Well, it seems to me that Chris should explain it. Uh, he can do it in her dollars.
And you can jump in and, uh, yeah, there's no, there's no need, you're, you're invited as the chair, so you can jump in and end your conversation at any point in time. Chris, why don't you do the highlights of this?
Okay, I'm gonna do a brief summary. First, we'll take just a minute to explain what, what this is. This is a master plan reexamination report, not necessarily a full master plan reviewing, um, starting from ground zero, from cleaning from scratch to develop a master plan or revision for Franklin Township as a whole. Uh, it's a review of the previous master plans of the town. The last time you had a master plan reexam report adopted was, I believe, in the spring of 2013, and by law, they're supposed to be reviewed once every 10 years, so technically you're about a year overdue on this now, but process has been going on for, for a while. It's not really a huge problem there, but the purpose of a master plan reexamine is to review periodically, every now and then, every 10 years, or at least every 10 years, what your previous master plans were, what the goals and objectives, what the vision for the town is, and make an determination really is, is, you know, is this where we want to go? The, the goals and objectives or recommendations of previous master plans, is that still what we want to do? Does that represent who we want to be as a town in, in terms of primarily land use regulations? Um, because by law, your zoning ordinance and other land use regulations are required to be consistent with your master plan, and so to a large degree, the purpose of reviewing the master plan is to also review your land development regulations to see if they're consistent with what you're trying to achieve. Uh, you look at things like variances that are graded by the zoning board, what applications they're seeing to determine, is there something in your regulations that are just out of step with reality or out of step with what you're trying to do, and really make adjustments as you, as you go forward. And the purpose of this document is to review previous plans, review what's been going on in the town in the last decade, as well as review trends, uh, and other things statewide or nationally for that matter, to see how they might be impacting the town, and make some recommendations to, are there adjustments needed to your land use ordinances and other policy documents going forward to, uh, correct the course or, or, or it could be then you're saying, we're, we like the way we're moving, we want to stay the course. That's the, the primary objective here is, is really review of previous plans and review of your land development ordinances that relate to the plan to see if there's any changes that need to be made to make sure that, uh, develop, development can occur where you want it to occur and you're, you're protecting areas that you want to protect and to some degree largely.
Big.
So.
He's probably.
Don't recall exactly when it was sent to all of you, but there's a draft of the document, uh, there, the subcommittee had been put together about, uh, apparently at our first meeting, was it back in January or February, perhaps?
Yeah.
February, February, that's actually, we met monthly since February, uh, so I think February, March, April, May, uh, so we had at least four meetings in the subcommittee, uh, which made up of several members of the planning board and several members of the public, uh, to undertake the task of reviewing the previous master plans and reviewing the land development ordinances and hashing out the issues of where we want to see the town go in the future. Um, we have it, the full version of this is in, in draft form, it's not quite ready to be adopted because, uh, by law, the planning board has the authority to adopt a master plan and all master plan reexamination reports. The, the subcommittee's role was to put together a draft of the plan, um, so we, we've done that. There are several sections of the plan, uh, that are required by law, so I don't want to necessarily say that you can skip over certain parts, but in the, uh, how big is this, I mean, down? Approximately 48 pages in here, uh, 30 pages of it are just things that are required by law, such as a review of demographic changes in the town from the 2010 census to the 2020 census, which are required by law to be in here, but are largely not that important in terms of the substance of the plan. Uh, the primary substance of the plan is the, the recommendations at the end, uh, which is something like 10 to 12 pages of, of suggested policy changes. But I'll, we'll quickly skim through, we have a quick overview of the town, you know, explaining where Franklin is, uh, how big it is, what's there now, um, the view of recent mention of environmental constraints in the town and where Franklin sits in terms of the overall of the state plan. There is a review of what all the previous goals and objectives, or we had previous master plans, where we say, I believe, your original master plan, which I think dates to 97, 2004, Sub sequel plans, 2007, I think there's one, 2009, one in 2011, and one in 2013, thoroughly reviewing all of those prior goals and objectives and then making a determination as to whether those goals and objectives are still relevant or not to what degree they've been addressed. And there is a, a section discussing what the town has done, what, what's happened here and what's happened in the state in terms of new laws in the past decades since your last master plan. So I don't need to go through all those. Quick reference of things like there's been changes in the board housing legislation, uh, cannabis was not legal last time you did a master plan, now it is, um, quite a few laws signed by the governor, various governors throughout the past decade, that are things that need to be addressed, the kind of your land disorders. And there've been some changes in the township level, there have been ordinances, you, the town has adopted, the township committee has changed land development regulations in the last 10 years. Those are all referenced in here, so to make sure that we're taking account of that. And then I, I go through changes to the, uh, the demographic profile of the town, which if anybody who's lived here for a while, uh, should not be a big surprise, from 2010 to 2020, there was not any massive changes in crime in terms of your population or accomplish with the people that live here. Well, I'll go and skip to really, like I said, the important part, beginning on page 35 of the report is the recommendations. The first recommendation, it is a little bit lengthy, it's something that I thought was, was necessary, given that you have four different master plan reexams and have all reviewed previous goals and objectives from previous plans and then added their own goals and objectives and recommendations, but perhaps it's time to consolidate those lists of goals and recommendations because they're, they're a bit duplicitous, there's a lot of redundancy in there. So we've got to reorganize the goals and objectives and the assumptions that go into the master plan, so it's a little more concise, a little more clear, to see what, what's the overall business for the town and what, what, what the goals of the master plan are, so that you don't have, now it's only, there would be about three pages of goals and objectives and assumptions rather than 15 or whatever listed in previous plans, so it's easier to read, point being, it's easier to read through the plan and get an idea of what the plan actually is, instead of having to jump back and forth between various goals and objectives that kind of all said the same things. I have a number of recommendations for ordinance changes, and I'm gonna mention a few and I'll jump back to ones, there's a few in particular that I think weren't through your discussion, but for the most part, I mean, there's a lot in here, for the most part, at the subcommittee, we, uh, largely came to agreement on most of these. There are, are a few issues that, that wasn't necessarily unanimous and said, that I think weren't through the discussion at this board before finalizing any plan or threatening for adoption. Uh, first one, we think the regulations in the RA district to be clarified, and in particular for smaller lot developments, the standards in the RA district seem to be written with the assumption that every development was going to be a major subdivision and have, you know, 50 to 100 units developed, when mostly we're seeing, uh, you know, two lot subdivision or a single family home being built, and a lot of times those are being required to go to the zoning board, so whole areas is, probably they shouldn't need to do that. We think the RA district standards could be simplified. Uh, I'm gonna go, skip over number nine on page 40, just to, that's what more ones you need to come back to, and that's discussion over warehouses. What I have, you know, relatively lengthy set of recommendations in here on, on warehouses would be appropriate and inappropriate in towns, that is, although I haven't come to Franklin just yet, it, it's throughout South Jersey, that's been a, a big issue, and I'm sure everyone here has seen, if you've driven outside the town, plenty of places where massive warehouses are being built, and a lot of towns did not have any regulations in place to address those warehouses, anywhere basically industrial uses were forbidden. Cell furs were able to fill 500,000 square, 1 million square foot warehouses with very little people. So we will, we are trying to address that, I'll get back to that.
This.
Uh, next recommendation, we suggest, um, your highway commercial zone covers the majority of the frontage of, of Harding Highway and Delsey Drive, and there are pockets of existing residences in the highway commercial district, uh, along those frontages, as I'm sure you're all aware of. And right now, the highway commercial zone doesn't expressly permit single family homes, so anyone who owns a house fronting on Harding Highway, if you're in the highway commercial district, if you wanted to expand, you probably have to go to the zoning board or a use variance, rather than just, you know, being able to, to go add and, expand on your kitchen or add a, add a fourth bedroom to your house by right, and that, uh, we think there should be provisions in the code to, um, accommodate existing residences while maintaining a commercial zoning law, the highway credit district. Uh, next, we're suggesting that, um, because the township did opt in a few years ago to allow certain cannabis businesses, but the zoning code hasn't been updated, that, um, specific standards for those cannabis businesses have been put in place. As of right now, you've opted in for the industrial cannabis uses, not retail and not delivery, but the, uh, cultivation, storage, distribution, and, um, manufacturing businesses would be permitted in your industrial districts, but without any specific provisions to, uh, address them.
Just.
Uh, next, we have quite a few relatively minor recommendations to clarify your zoning code in terms of accessory structures, how big they're, they're allowed to be, where they're allowed to go, and what districts, um, cool. There's three or four recommendations in here, and the, the overall, uh, I guess the crux of them is that we're recommending that accessory structures be permitted, uh, on a sliding scale, based on how big the structure is going to be, the larger setbacks would be required, uh, and depending on the size of your lot, with, will also dictate how big the accessory structure permitted to be, instead of a one-size-fits-all approach to every property in town.
See.
Mention of battery energy storage systems, the potential new use that's not addressed anywhere in your code, that, uh, you know, could be coming down the line, that somebody might want to actually, uh, do that as a, as a principal use somewhere, uh, not something I've seen, with the exception of now they are installing, though, you put some solar installations, um, but it's something that's not, not addressed in the code, it's sort of a newer energy storage system, but like, somebody might want to do that, and that should be addressed in the code.
Hello.
Uh, mentioning for accessory uses, right now, storage as an accessory use isn't permitted at the business district, I, I think it should be allowed, that if a business wants to build a paydown to store some of their materials, they should be allowed to do so, uh, provided it meets the accessory structure standards that we discussed earlier. Uh, next recommendation, there's, uh, a few gaps, as well as some possible inconsistencies in terms of, you have a few different sections of your code that address major and minor development, both in the definitions of your zoning code, there is major development, minor development, and then, I believe, major subdivision and minor subdivision are defined, and minor site plan is defined, but major is not. Uh, there's a little bit of inconsistency there, and then between your zoning ordinance, your stormwater code, uh, and a few other sections of the code, it's not exactly clear what constitutes a major development, what is a minor development, and that possibly trigger, uh, a lot of different things in terms of if somebody wants to build a house, uh, you want to make sure that somebody just building a single family home isn't being forced to go to the zoning board, planning board, just because they're disturbing, uh, you know, 5,000 square feet, they want to make sure that somebody that is doing a really big project, that's considered a major development, and that there's consistency among the definitions in the various sections of the code, so that's just something that needs to be cleaned up. Uh, we have a, right, uh, we'll come back to number 19 in a minute, that's about, uh, on the same line as the, the minor subdivision suggesting, uh, there'd be a provision in the code that minor developments that are, uh, really essentially very small, uh, that they be exempt from having to submit grading plans to the township for, for construction permanent people, or right now, the code reads that, uh, any development, you have to demonstrate that you're not having an adverse impact in terms of drainage on your adjacent property, and that could be interpreted that, uh, you're putting a shed in your backyard that you got from Gold Depot, that's, you know, of less than 100 square feet, and you gotta have an, it's here, prepare a grading plan. And what we're saying is if you're significant distance off of your property line, that you're not anywhere near your actual neighbors, and, you know, whatever you're doing is rather small, and they shouldn't have to go out and hire engineer or surveyor or somebody and, you know, spend $5,000 to prepare a grading plan, but it's very clear that they're not to have an adverse impact.
See.
Like we're, making some recommendations to, uh, correct what I think is a, uh, possibly an error in the code, but, uh, in the side yard, it should be allowed to have fences that are six feet high, not just in the rear yards, that's been triggering quite a few variances. Uh, we talk about updating your code to have a moratorium on road openings within five years after a road is paved, with some exceptions for hardships or, and that there's just no other way around it. Uh, the purpose there being, we don't want to repay, pay the money to repay the road and then have six months later, somebody come in to tear it up, when it could have been avoided.
Actually.
I have a few more recommendations to clean up the language of what is considered a front yard, once a front lot line, there's a little bit of confusion or a little bit of a gray area in terms of if somebody has a throughwater or corner property, uh, which one you treat as the front yard, and that's not exactly defined, that should be cleaned up.
That is it.
Uh, there's a provision in the code that we, we felt was unnecessary, that we think should be deleted, and the design standards specifically says that, um, even if you meet the minimum required lot width in a district, if the depth of your lot is going to be more than two and a half times the width, then it, that automatically triggers a, oh, oh, a design waiver, um, that seems a little unnecessary, that if you're reading the minimum lot area and the minimum lot width, uh, I don't know that it's necessary to have a, a ratio of the size of the lot, be triggering relief at, at the planning board or zoning board, whatever the case may be, depending on the application, uh, that otherwise, if you're reading all the buildable requirements, that, that should be a permitted lot. Uh, we want to take us the buffer requirements between residential uses and non-residential uses, as well as, uh, clarify a few provisions where it grants the planning board the, uh, I guess some leeway to grant waivers for buffer requirements, that frankly, language in the code that says the planning board can grant a waiver is unnecessary, because you already have that authority, anytime somebody requests a merit or a waiver, and by having language in the code that specifically says, planning board can grant a waiver from this, it almost makes it seem like you should be granting it as a right if somebody asks, rather than making them prove their case, and that's probably to be deleted from the code. Uh, we're suggesting that landscaping requirements for new subdivisions of site plans be enhanced, uh, possibly through, uh, adopting an updated landscaping requirements code, which would then, uh, got tied with enhanced buffer requirements, and that there'd be a little bit clearer and more strict standards of what's required, um, the type of landscaping required, buffer area, as well as other general landscaping, and we're in for a major developers. Uh, we suggest that architectural design standards or guidelines should be developed for, uh, for larger projects or for non-residential structures to, uh, kind of ensure or give some guidance to developers in terms of the types and the character of architectural style you're looking for in your commercial needs. Um, next, we have the stormwater management regulations, uh, even though the DEP did just put out new rules not too long ago, and the township, as, as far as I recall, is, is complying with those, although I, I want to say somebody had mentioned to me that the, either DEP or Franklin's, like he had, uh, amending their, their code again soon, which, you know, they do that all the time now, uh, but even though the town is, is consistent now with the, the requirements for storm management, there, there's a suggestion that's that you consider, um, you are allowed to go a little bit further than what DEP requires, and in particular, um, we want to encourage some of the alternatives to storm water management, rather than just the state or basin, we want to encourage things like rain guard, sort of, a bit more attractive than just, uh, you know, a hole in the ground and then hit the side yard surrounded by a fence, as well as we want to take into account the conditions of the soil when somebody can design stormwater to make sure that, uh, we're properly addressing groundwater recharge, uh, so there, there is possibility that if, if the town wishes to go, take it a step further from what DEP, mine was already requires, and we're, we're suggesting that you consider that.
Should we keep only talking?
The last sections of the plan are regarding redevelopment, and, uh, the reexamination report by state law is required to, uh, basically state where you have redevelopment areas and whether or not redevelopment plans that are existing, uh, should be incorporated into your master plan, so we're, we're, these last two sections, the first redevelopment, we're simply pointing out where you have existing redevelopment areas, uh, just so it's acknowledged in the master plan, really, we're not really recommending changes here. As you have a redevelopment area at Meredith Farms, there is a property, uh, South Caron Street and 55, near Clayton Township, that was designated and needed redevelopment in 2009, and then we're also suggesting that for any future redevelopment areas, that the township, uh, really focus on areas that actually have, uh, development potential and that they're, uh, really shouldn't be, you know, be, they need to examine for redevelopment properties that are going to be undevelopable anyway, such as if the property is entirely encumbered by weblands, even if you designate it need a redevelopment and try to encourage development there, easy key, I'm, it's regulation, I guess, I know you can't build anything there anyway, so the exercise of even pursuing redevelopment on completely undevelopable properties is really, um, unnecessary, kind of a, a bit of a waste of time and then that resources, and so that's really the only recommendation for redevelopment, those master plan, we're not getting into is that, that redevelopment study, we're not looking at any particular properties to say, this should be an area, need a redevelopment, that will have to come through a direction of the township committee during this board in the future, if they wanted to, but we're acknowledging the existing redevelopment area, the redevelopment areas that are already in place, and that maybe a suggestion that redevelopment be focused on, uh, if they're, if the township, if it wants to go that route, let's be focused on properties that are, have a development potential anyway. Uh, the last section, which is, I believe, maybe two or three years ago, if that was added to the municipal land use law to be included in the reexamination report, is a, uh, basically an assessment of where electric vehicle infrastructure should be located in. We kept this rather brief, I, in my opinion, this is something that I, I don't know why it needs to be in a master plan, it's fairly obvious, uh, you would want electric vehicle infrastructure, at least public charging stations would be along highways where you have people traveling, and possibly in public properties where you have, uh, where you actually have some control over parking lots, which would be your parks and municipal facilities.
Yeah.
And other than that, the new state law requires electric vehicle infrastructure with every new parking lot, that's above 25 spaces anyway, so that, that, that would take care of itself. And that, in a nutshell, is what we have in the, in the master plan draft at this point. Uh, so now I will go back, like I said, I think for our further discussion, on page, or actually, I'm sorry, before I get into the specific discussion on warehouses, I'll let Suzanne see if she wants to supplement my, uh, summary.
No, but you do have to go back to 19.
Nine and 19, yes.
Like.
In fact, and.
Lot. Subdivision.
Okay, well, actually, I'll do 19 first, I think that'll be quicker.
Right.
We had a discussion on, right now, your, your ordinance, uh, the distinction between a minor subdivision and a major subdivision, uh, is five lots total, so if, if you have a property of, let's say, 10 acres, and you want to split it into five properties, each of two acres, that's, uh, I think that triggers a major subdivision, and if you, if you did it only for, it's a micro subdivision. Uh, the primary difference between the two being, a major subdivision triggers a lot in your, um, submission requirements, you have to do more environmental studies, uh, um.
Curving side.
Yes, it triggers what you have to do in terms of, uh, how you improve the property, um, whereas minor subdivision, you, you just draw, it could be a lot lies. Uh, and that, that being said, what also would trigger a major versus a minor, even if you're only doing two lots, is if you are extending utilities or building a new road, uh, that automatically triggers a major subdivision, regardless of how many lots you're, you're, you're building. So if you're building a new road, you, you have to, the curves, that you have to build the street according to RSIS, all those things. So there was a discussion, and, um, I don't want to say unanimous consensus, but we, before we got to, in this report, is that we would drop that by one, and four lots would, would trigger a major rather than five, um, so I'd like that to be, you know, is that.
Five ditches through the way. Spot. I think, oh, jump around, he's heading. This, tonight, this, this, man, it goes ahead for the first time tonight, the board members have, are part of the, something, you have not had, you know, but change, you know, so right before we go into any discussion, I want to make sure the board members that have been a part of it, haven't seen this report, have the opportunity in town to get on this report, so I, I don't want to start discussion at this point, tonight, just had something to.
Sure.
So.
I'd like, I'd like, it's unfortunate enough to be a subcommittee and.
Can't hear you, Jim. Put your mic down, please.
Uh, you know, I was fortunate to be on the subcommittees, as well as obviously with explaining, and, um, you know, for the most part, this report that is being talked about tonight, I think that the subcommittee members were pretty much in agreement with most 98% of them. most 98% of them. The piece that I think that we did not reach consensus on is what Chris is going to talk about, section nine. And I uh, I have an issue with this. Um, I don't believe that subcommittee is really fit to think that they shouldn't have provided the opportunity to ask the questions, to clarify and and make sure that the entire subcommittees on board is what presenting this. Uh, it's it's my opinion, I think that's all fair, the subcommittee was charged with that role, and I don't believe that that's all.
Okay, so with that thought, let me go to Kate. Kate, the plan has been presented to the place, we have many board members that haven't seen it, other than walking in tonight, that this is not the federal government, there's a 10,000 pages and you get it tonight before and vote on it, it's too important. My thought to to Jim's recommendation, can we, do we need to have a uh a motion in a second to have the entire or welcome the entire subcommittee into the discussion when the discussion takes place? I I strongly believe that the board needs to review this.
Right.
So I'll give them the opportunity and to Jim's point, allow the uh subcommittee to be able outside of the public portion, which we'll have a public portion, there's no question about that, after all the discussions are done, uh, but allow the subcommittee to address the board freely in the conversation, so we're basically adding the subcommittee to the planning board for open discussion.
I mean, you can certainly do it that way. Um, I think that, I don't know if the subcommittee is here this evening, uh, I know that there was a discussion about whether or not we could introduce it to the planning board as is right now, with some additional discussions taking place because I understand there was a little bit of discussion that requires for remained as to section nine and that supplement and the additional, we could do it that way if everybody's available this evening after our planning board.
Now, the planning board seeing it for the, the planning board member is not part of the subcommittee is seeing it for the first time.
Right.
And they need to digest it, review it and be able to talk, they're going to be called upon a vote on this thing. And I'm going to make sure that they're on board. So I'm looking at moving, receiving it to sitting, and holding a public hearing in July.
As long as the subcommittee have been, you know, prior to the.
Oh, wait, wait.
Is uh, is uh, you know, complete with their recommendations and their review of it and and uh they've had their, have done their part.
And we're receiving it, so, you know, we know we have a great.
Right.
Uh, the uh, so anyway, to Jimmy's point, uh.
Yeah, I think the subcommittee needs to be tweeting and clear this piece out.
Yes, and I would do it with the full board, uh, I would do it with the full board present and allow them to speak just as we do here.
Right.
And not hold them to the requirements of the public session, which we will have uh as well, but allow them to intertwine with their uh with their thoughts and information because they're the ones that sat there and developed this and they have the history of having up to that point. So I have no objections, I just want to make sure legally we can do that.
Right, the subcommittee can come in, they wouldn't be under the standard as a regular.
Right.
You know, be right, so they wouldn't be uh subject to that, they can come in on your permission.
To allow them to speak.
Right.
Okay, all right. So uh, that's my thought. So John, I interrupted initially, I want the board members to have the opportunity to review this, like it's way too important to do it on the fly, uh, like I said. It's not, it's not a 10,000 page document that we got the night before.
One thing that I forgot to clarify in my sort of opening presentation, this is only a discussion item for this board right now, this has not been noticed, there there is no.
That's true, I didn't notice it is, that's another strong point.
And so tonight, we'd be basically.
We're basically accepting the document for you.
Right, and then you would be setting a date for a public here.
The net of it is on.
Well, I bet, but it's got to be clear that you're accepting a document that's incomplete.
Yeah, I I was going to say, while we allow them the resigning to clean this up.
Yeah.
And approve it, and then we review it.
Because it had, we had, once it comes to the planning board in the future, we have the, you know, we would end up changing it. I would rather have the subcommittee group and the planning board group talking face to face, uh, because if they came back with a change, you know, this floating thing is a problem. Like, uh, I don't think, you know, I I don't think anybody.
Uh.
I'm not sure if anybody agrees or disagrees, um, I'm not sure if we're there on the floor, but I would like the input for the full board that hadn't had the opportunity to hear that discussion.
But so, the role on the subcommittee was to to tear the point and and present it to your claim.
Right.
Which is the.
Or can then either adopt it for recommendation or not at all.
Right, or miselections.
So they really shouldn't, the claim or the full claim board should not be part of that formation of the claim.
Can I make a suggestion?
No.
What you talking about?
Jimmy, I got, we're we're agreeing with each other. I want to bring the planning board into that conversation because once it's presented and whatever it does say, um, the members of the planning board can change it. So I would rather have them like talk to the.
Think that after the, after the, like, the subcommittee presents its final plea to our back up. I'm. How we don't just send you guys out and. Well, that's it, that's what I'm going to do. So, I didn't know, I just want to make a suggestion, we can be firing out the differences because any, any of us agreed upon plan to the planning board, which then can accept or not. I was going to go with the. Yeah. I already can say what, to, that, 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 that subcommittee was pretty much in agreement with, like I said, 98% of this plan. Where you had business, it was in a sentence.
I have no problem.
You know, and I I think that, but we never even had a chance to talk, that's a problem. Like, yeah, I just want to have a, did talk, you know, we didn't speak at all.
Agree, I mean, I don't believe we this part was such a. My only comment would be, an unbiased comment would be, is one more meeting to discuss the, let it change number nine or anything else. If not, then there's no, there's no.
Well, good.
This, then.
It could.
Is one where.
No, but against.
That would be my only.
They, this floating zone issue is a thought that nobody's happened with. So that's really kind of what section nine looks at.
So if it's going, there is going to be, there's going to be discussion, but would it be better for the full board and the subcommittee to have that discussion?
I don't, you know where I stand.
Yeah, I mean, I, I got a committee.
I would like to hear from Suzanne.
It's all my, yeah, same thing. Okay, Suzanne. Would you rather, would, and and, yeah, actually, well, it's your choice. Would you rather have another subcommittee meeting on the number nine issue and uh or would you rather have a discussion with the board on the number nine issue where you, uh, you know, because there's a lot of questions about that. And I think you've heard both of our positions.
I think we should have another meeting on the number nine issue, but I think we could present everything except item number nine to them. We'd rather.
Talk in a month.
And so that's, we, well, we talked about having a meeting on the 26th of June, and people seem to be available for that. I'm not sure, I'm not a hundred percent.
I'm not, I'm not. It doesn't, I'm betting it happens.
Okay, and I, and there's certainly no objection to any of the board's support being pressed indeed. I mean, we've had lots of people in the audience and they have actually been allowed to speak and make suggestions, and there's no reason why the force I was bringing in pressing said that. But I do think we need to iron out section nine, as they call the rest of the plan, we can present to the planning board now as complete. And then add that.
That I would say that, you know, you're present, you're you're presenting the plan and the planning board will be accept or exception.
Right, and then that will be presented to the planning board in advance of the July meeting so that everybody on the planning board has an opportunity to really look at it.
Okay, just from an operational standpoint, if you call the meeting on the 26th, they're by the end of the month, so the plan, the planning board members, I don't want to go into July and have the planning board members, here's what we came up with for number nine. Uh, I would want the planning board members to receive a draft, to add it to, we will accept everything but number nine this evening. Turn around and, you know, all the subcommittee made, iron it out and forward to Chris so that the planning board members have the opportunity to review it prior to the meeting a couple weeks.
Yes.
Because this way, we'll we'll put ourselves right back in the same position we are right now. We gave them the document to see me and say, vote on it, and it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
No. It's only we take it very clear that we're accepting it instead of.
We're accepting the. You sit down and start writing, uh, start writing the motion because you're going to make the motion.
All right, so. Frankly, there doesn't need to be any motion in terms of accepting the document, it's it's a matter of once it's ready to be adopted, there will be a minimum of 10 days notice in the paper, there'll, at least two copies, hard copies will be on file at the clerk's office, we can't, even if you said it was okay, I couldn't just, you know, finish it the night before, drop it, you know, come in here and say, here's the plan now.
No, I don't want to do that.
Everyone out here has to have a minimum of 10 days to be able to access it.
Okay, so it doesn't require a motion, but I still want, in reference, to reflect that your, if you present it, um, will be accepted, accepted right in between to get compressed by the subcommittee.
Yeah, I I have no problem with that.
We're tabling number nine and the subcommittee will re uh present a amended report on item number nine and Christine will distribute it prior to the meeting for the planning board members who aren't part of the subcommittee to view for it.
I could, I could live with that.
And you can do Chris, right, because Chris is rewriting.
Frankly, if I'm rewriting one section, which is about two pages long, assuming whenever we meet, if that's the 26th, uh, then basically the next day I can, you know, whatever, shouldn't take too long, an hour or so at most, to just rewrite that section, edit this and then send it to to Chrissy, then she can get it to you. And then we'll, we'll, I'll make sure we get proper notice in the paper and get the, okay, I think we got to send it to the Pylons, send it to the states, send it to Canada. Yes, notice in the paper, all that stuff.
Yeah, too much.
Yeah, we'll get that.
And in the meantime, the members can start reviewing everything with number nine. And this way, in a couple weeks, we get the best people together and we're discussing July.
So it's going to establish that applies to the 26th, the subcommittee, the big content with Ash Al, no good.
If that's what the subcommittee wants, I'm okay with that.
Is the subcommittee going to invite the general population of the planning board to take part in this? Yes, yes.
That's up to you. Because.
Very sad. I think it's helpful to the planning board, but it's also went essentially out there mostly at the reason. I'm the first.
Every other reading has been open to this point, I see a reason to not to to change that.
Okay, so we're tabling number nine this evening, uh, there's going to be a discussion of Chris, do you have anything else uh that's signed still in the line?
Uh, there is one other thing I want to bring up, this was, this was uh brought to my attention by the town engineer administrator, uh, maybe a few days ago, and they suggested to me that we also look at, we we talked about the existing houses in the highway commercials and making sure that they are permitted to remain, uh, sort of the the opposite of that, is there are a few areas, um, the majority of the town along both Harding Highway and Delsey Drive are the Highway Commercial District or one of the two buildings, it's either Malaga Bill, Bill or Brian and Bill. Um, but there are, I think, like five or six properties that are technically in the RA zone, even though they have front end on either Harding Highway or or Delsey Drive. And the suggestion was we consider adding those into the Highway Commercial District so that you have uniform highway commercial zoning across your.
What is the outcome or maybe there's also any interest in chocolate for which you are.
Well, if the highway commercial zone is also amended to allow the existing residences to stay, then there would be provisions that if an existing house would would be grandfathered in and would not be considered a non-performing use.
So do you use that actually?
That's one of the recommendations we already have in the plan is that if you own a house that's currently in the Highway Commercial District, uh, you would be, essentially be allowed to stay as a permitted use, and it still wouldn't be a necessarily a, you can build a bunch of new houses in the Highway Commercial Zone, the the general idea is you want to, that's your your commercial corridor where you want to see the residential development, keep on highways. But if you already have a house, you're not treated as a non-performing use, that you're not allowed to expand in any way, you're allowed to still utilize your property to your enjoyment and your benefit like anybody else would in the residential district. And so the idea then would be, uh, those few areas that are zoned residential, the RA, the residential agriculture, uh, that those would shift to highway commercial, but there's existing houses on there, they would still have the grandfathered the same way than the other, so sorry. That's up to you all.
Yeah, we had issues. I like that. We've had issues with homeowners with mortgages, but when they go to re-orders or whatever, it becomes, some more things are still out, clean some outcomes for that. So I did clean that up just because that's happened twice each.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was a mortgage issue, but uh, that all the one reason to uh.
We're drinking, probably was George's screw.
Was welcome.
I guess since then, I didn't think this is.
Yeah, I'm fine. Okay. Uh, all right, Mr. Record, that the plan was was presented with the master plan preliminary review report, that the uh, we're not accepting item number nine, uh, the subcommittee is going to still work on that and supplementary, as a supplemental report.
Uh.
I got two big.
Okay, so first, I've been uh, done a lot of thought about this master plan, a lot of that, uh, Suzanne, Sarah, Ralph, Jell, Jim, Steve, and Jason, um, and also, um, Chris, the same name, we see a lot of these projects, we plan this thing, I feel, I find that they need, that's already, I think that's, for me, the dress that's pretty, it's like you guys were dealing with all ends of the spectrum and I was pretty impressed, well, we're never going to make everybody happy, but thank you. And the second thing was, did not tell my neighbor boss or someone like that. Now, I don't know, Suzanne, you did a very nice job of heading, uh, all ends of the rebuild of all ends of the spectrum and trying to maintain about. Yeah, you did a very nice job, I appreciate it. All right, uh, we're good? Everybody's good?
I, I wanted to ask you, I know when you had sat in on a meeting with the Dollar General, with the, or Jeff, that they were supposed to carry this evening, and I don't know if we received their notice of, of, they had noticed and they were supposed to submit those and we had not received them, uh, we were going to announce that they asked us to announce that they would be moved to the July meeting, um, subject to having received all of their proofs that they had submitted, um, notice, uh, of, you know, of their meeting, but I had not seen it in neither as could the other nine.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to announce that, that they were moved to the July meeting, um, if it.
Well, if they're not over your agenda for the July, they, they get the, at this time, I entertain a motion to have the Dollar General application re-advertize, uh, the meeting on whether it's, uh, July or August, uh, it's our motion. Is there a second? To a second old favor, notify them to have to re-advertize these, and then, uh, because that's a heavy application, we we need to look at, uh, if we will move, it's going to be easier for us to move the read exam, so either July or August with 10-day notification on legal notification, not Facebook, um, legal notification, or right now, we're planning on doing it in July, unless that application is coming in, all right? And then, in both cases, both.
Publicly advertised 10 days prior.
Right? All right, so let's move on, correspondence, there's nine. Uh, entertain a motion for amendments of April 16, 2024.
Motion to approve amendments of, uh, 416 and 521.
Okay, um, this is going separately because I can't, you can't converge that part here, so we'll call on the, uh, April 16.
About.
Jimmy was on a.
Mister, my lady.
Yes.
Mrs. Castle's kid.
They don't.
Mister Kelly.
This is for 16.
Mister Clark.
Yes.
Mister Doyle.
We're staying on this.
Mister Tavlio.
Yes.
Sharon DeHausch.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to the, uh, May 21st meeting, which was canceled non-quarum and I'll just, uh, so who else checked to a meal? At this time, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of May 23rd, which, uh, owing from the record, was that the meeting was canceled due to a non-quarum.
I will second for May 21st nominee, sorry.
I don't have anybody here.
We sit on it.
Did I say 23rd? Well, it says 21st.
I have it on my calendar, just like they're just.
Okay.
I think.
All right, okay.
Actually.
Just until.
Until. All right, um, Kate, there's no reason for enclosed session?
There's no reason for closed session.
Um, I'd like to get an update, and if it's necessary, we can wait till next May and do a close at that point in time on the, um, lawsuit, uh, painting zoning lawsuit, uh, as what we have on that, can you talk on that without being in closed session or, uh, where you need the chance to, uh, reveal it?
Um, I actually can give you a brief update without any holes.
Yeah, okay.
So there's litigation in connection to the ordinance and, um, that is now being settled by way of consent order, so, um, the parties have agreed to annika was settled and, um, it's being settled by consent order, but it's also being discussed by the court without prejudice and the medicalities of that, however necessary. Um, now as to the other issue with the zoning board appeal, that has been appealed to the next level to the telecourt, so had they breached submitted, um, they're awaiting a schedule for oral argument, most likely that would take place sometime in August, so we're just waiting on that.
All right, so we're waiting.
Yes.
Okay, does anybody on the board have anything else to add to this? Nope, at this time, I can motion to a term. Nope, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I just want a motion.
Here's a second.
Uh, adjourn? No, we came here to say something and you're going to adjourn?
Nora, yes.
Why?
Why? I'll explain why.
I'm not, I don't want to talk about the warehouse, I have other things to ask the planning board and to ask these people.
Nora, we cannot have a discussion on the master plan because we never advertised it. Just because it was on Facebook doesn't mean that we're going to, we received the report, allowing the opportunity of the members to review it. We never advertised 10-day notice for a public hearing on the report.
So you're saying that if a public member comes to a planning board, right, any planning board, not necessarily the master plan planning board, and wants to say something to the planning board, because you didn't advertise the master plan thing, I can't have the public portion to say what I want to say about something else?
Correct.
Oh, so you, in essence, decided that the planning board meeting is just not going to have a public portion anymore?
That's correct.
Anytime it feels like it.
It was abused.
Excuse me?
We are going to have a discussion. I, I have a motion and a second for adjourned, all in favor? Any opposed? Here, none, most is adjourned, we adjourned.
That is poor.